All right, we'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. We've got a big crowd and we'll go ahead and get started with our meeting. All right. We have Lieutenant Commander Charles Miller here to lead us in our pledge of allegiance tonight.
All clear. The vision to define the United States of America and free, public, gorgeous hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being just a trial.
All right, we appreciate that. Mrs. Dowd is not feeling well tonight, so we'll take every good duties for now. So with that being said, I will call the October the 26th, 2023 Coffey County Board of Education regular meeting to order. And, uh, do we have Pastor Rutland here?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
That's great. Father, we thank you for your presence. We thank you for your oversight. God, we ask you to bless this meeting. We ask you to bless this board as they come together. All the things that are going to be celebrated and acknowledged tonight, we pray, God, that it would be done decently and in order with a spirit of love and community. We ask you, God, to bless them as they make decisions and have made decisions. We ask you to bless each one of those. And Lord, let them make good decisions, wise decisions, decisions that put our students first and with great consideration to faculty and staff. We thank you for the whole system here in Coffey County. We thank you for what you do with it now. We ask you, God, just to guide and to continue to bless that this county and this system would function at its very best. And Lord, that can only happen with your help and with your blessing. So we ask your blessing on this and this meeting in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thanks, sir. All right. Everybody's had time to look over the agenda. We have motion to adopt the agenda. Luke, we adopt the agenda as presented. Preston?
I say.
Wade? Second. All in favor? All right. Dr. Leece?
Thank you, sir. Our mission is destination graduation for college career and life. And it's just great to see all these young people here tonight and welcome. We appreciate you parents and coaches and sponsors and family members being here also. So thank you. And then our vision is to create a stronger community through an equitable and excellent education for every student. I think that excellent piece is very important, though. We want to be the best community we could possibly be and make sure we're striving for excellence in everything that we do. So moving forward, we've got supportive culture and climate and special recognitions. So at this point, we are going to work through our recognitions. Ms. Anita Lotte will handle this.
I'm going to call up Coach Mike Booth and Katie Lotte to discuss our students that went to the weightlifting competition back over the summer. And so it's awesome to see a room full of kids, but the accomplishments they got there have carried over into all the other sports they do. But I just want to congratulate all of y'all. My kids have had an opportunity to work with Coach Booth and he and Katie and Angela do such a great job and they've got so many that help them. So I'm going to turn it over to y'all too, so y'all can brag on the kids.
Oh, Steve? First of all, I'd like to apologize to Dr. Leece. I don't know if he remembers this. Do you remember driving around the turnaround today, early this morning, about very hot? They'll turn out my yard on? Well, Mr. Dr. Leece made a Uwe on that thing and I've never seen anybody do that before. And I was coming, I about hit you, by the way. I've never seen anybody do the Uwe on it. I figured you were pulling off and I may need to stop. Anyway, I apologize for that.
No, I apologize.
We'll get Chris. We'll get Chris.
It'd be kind of funny.
Yeah, we'll give him a warning.
There were no, there were no knee gestures or anything like that. So I appreciate you not getting too mad there. Anyway, I'm sorry. So thank you, board, for having us this evening to recognize our kids. We had an awesome trip this summer to Colorado Springs. As it says up there, we had three national titles this summer, our 1300 boys, our 16, 17 boys, and the overall boys championship. So what we'll do tonight is call you guys up. Before I call up all of our lifters, I'd like to introduce our coaches. And I only have two of us tonight. Ashley Hu- Hu- Hu, excuse me. She's doing, she's in fire school right now, so she's unable to attend. Katie's here, of course, and Katie's been working with us for a couple of years now. Gavin Knight's not here tonight. And my wife, believe it or not, she was feeling bad. And this summer in Colorado Springs, we went up there and like the first day we got there, she had a bowel obstruction and was in the hospital for 13 days. While we were there and all this neat stuff was going on, I was in the hospital back and forth. But last night, she had the same kind of thing in her stomach, so we had to take her to ER. So she's in home kind of recovery, but my wife as well. What I'd like to do, is it okay to just pull them up here in front of me then? All right, so I'll call them up by their age divisions. We'll start off with our 13 and unders. Our first lifter, Scott Smith, he can come on up. Scott is probably one of our youngest. He is our youngest lifter that went to Nationals. And Scott, I believe, plays fourth in the 11 and under division. We have Brody Lotte, who's not here tonight. I don't think Brody came in. All right. Tripp Lewis. And Tripp plays third this summer in the 13 and under division. Kayden Bush. Cole McDuffie. And this tall kid, Elmo, the skinny guy. So these, these young men were part of our, our 13 and under group that won Nationals this summer. So we thank you for those guys. Let me go ahead. I forgot, I should have probably started with my ladies. So let's get the ladies now. Reese Robinson, where you at, Reese? Reese, come on up here. Reese was a 13 and under. And I believe, Reese, you were a fourth? I think she placed fourth in her weight class. And then we've got Chloe Merritt, which is a 16, 17. We only had two girls go this summer, but kind of a neat little note, we started our girls program at the high school. We had a meet today, actually. And currently, we have about 60 girls that are lifting with us, grade six through 12. And we'll have our first meet away at Baker County next week. So we're excited about that. But we won't have just two next year, that we'll have a larger group go with us. So we're excited about them. 14, 15 division, Bray Vester, he's not here tonight. We had some of them that had other things going on with football, so Bray couldn't make it. In our 16, 17 division, we had Layton Parker. We had Zane Preston, who placed fifth in his weight class. Mikhail Smith, and Mikhail placed fourth. So you can kind of see, we start getting fours, fives, threes, twos, things like that, to see how team points start adding up. Tico Smith couldn't make it. He was also, he had a football obligation tonight. He's also 16, 17. And our last lifter was Range Robinson, who places a runner-up in his weight class in the 16, 17. And I'd like to add, while they're coming up here, our kids, we really try to encourage kids to play multiple sports. How many of you guys play another sport? Raise your hand. Okay, so all of them, they're multi-sport athletes, so they're doing not just this, they're doing a lot of other things. I think we have a female wrestler this year. So that's neat. And we've got soccer, we've got swim here, we've got track and field, football. Did I forget anything? Softball, yes, softball with Reese and with Chloe. So they're doing a lot of stuff and we appreciate. Go ahead, Scott.
I didn't cross them.
And cross them. Sorry about that, Scott. That is our Nationals team there, and we thank you so much for having us this evening. All right, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Can I give the touches and not raise?
Yes, sir. I don't think we, and Range, I know Mr. Wade just mentioned, Range went to Worlds this, this spring in Albania. So that was pretty cool, too. I know, you're about to cover me up.
Guys, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, as we opened up our meeting, we cited the vision of equitable and excellent education for every student, to be national champions. I think that certainly exhibits excellence. So great, great having that team here tonight. All right. At this time, we also have another recognition, our National Principal, or our National Principals Month, yes. It's the Principals Month across the nation, and we just want to give thanks to our principals. And we have a great group of leaders in our buildings, and we're just blessed to have a committed group of principals that we have. And we wanted to be sure to give them thanks tonight and to recognize them tonight at our board meeting. And we're just thankful to have the principals that we have. So recognition of National Principals Month. Here they are. All right. Veterans Day commemoration.
I'm going to ask Mr. Chris Pachac to come up to the podium. He's going to speak to us about a certificate, the VA Regional Site Certificate, that has been given to our area by the Veterans Day National Committee. And this, I'm going to brag a little bit on him before he comes up. He has taken a really big role in facilitating the Veterans Day program out at Coffey High. So if anybody has not been part of that program, I'm going to put a plug that you plug in and you go to that. If you have not, you don't know what you're missing. They do an excellent job in the morning with the ceremony and interact the museum. And he's going to speak to those things, but I just wanted to let you know that he is one of the masterminds behind planning all this and just doing a great job of honoring everybody. So we thank you.
All right. Not only am I a teacher, I am a veteran, so that's what helped me push this. But last year, going on Dr. Leece's excellence, you know, I know we've got good programs in Coffey County for veterans, just to recognize them. And I've got a, across my news feed, they had a, they were talking about a Veterans Day site, regional site application to apply for this. And I said, well, let me see what it's about. And it really varied little information, so I put in and I put down everything that I knew, starting from the high school, the elementary schools, the veterans groups, and including the private schools, CCA and Fair Academy. And didn't hear anything back. And finally, I'm like, you know, if we're going to, if we're part of this, we need to know something soon. I sent an email and probably a week and a half later, I received an email, which is this letter, which I'm going to read to you. And then I'll explain everything else that we did very quickly. And this is from the Department of Veterans Affairs, and it's Coffey High School, Dear Sir and Madam. Madam, sorry. On behalf of the Veterans Day National Committee, I'm pleased to announce that Coffey County, Georgia has been selected as a regional site for the 2023 Veterans Day Commemoration. The designation certificate is enclosed. Secretary of Veterans Affairs, Dennis McDonald, will notify your governor of this selection and encourage support for your Veterans Day activities. If you're interested in receiving military ceremonial support for your site, please contact the Public Affairs Office of your closest military installation. The 2023 Veterans Day poster has been finalized and we will send your supplies as soon as they are available. Should you have any questions, please contact Ms. Terry Evans. Again, congratulations on your selection and best wishes for a successful event. Sincerely, B. Sue Fulton. And so this comes with several things attached to it. The first thing, they do have a Veterans Day poster contest for, through the Veterans Administration. So they sent a packet of the winning poster. So I've, I'm trying to get that to all the schools that are involved in the county and all the programs, including the board office. And this is what came first. I got a packet of this and I didn't know what else, you know, they didn't send anything else. And I'm like, did I request those? We get selected. Anyway, so that came. And then this certificate from, or the, from the Veterans Day National Committee, and it says, "The Veterans Day National Committee hereby designates Coffey County, Georgia as a regional site for the observance of Veterans Day 2023. Dennis McDonald, Secretary of Veterans Affairs and Chairman, Veterans Day National Committee." Now, when we, when we first got this, we got a little freaked out. Okay, we got to go big now. We got to go bigger. What, you know, what do we do? And I talked to, I set up a meeting with the veterans groups in the county. And I calmed down and I realized, I said, you know what? We put this application, I put this application in based on the schools, centered around the schools. So we already do this, so why do we have to do anything else? We'll just make it as the best we can from the schools. We'll make it more excellent. So what we decided, we worked on three goals, and we're pushing this throughout all the organizations in Coffey County. The first one is more publicity to the public. We want more public to know what we do in the schools for veterans and for Veterans Day. So we're going all out, talking to civic groups, trying to hit as many media outlets as we possibly can, and just trying to get the word out. Okay, that's goal one. Goal two was to get more citizen participation in the programs to come and see these programs. And that's a tough one, because usually it's just family members of veterans, family members of the children that are participating in the programs. So we're hoping we can try and get more of the public in to see what we do. And then the third one is more veteran participation and attendance to these programs. So, you know, I'm going to kind of, I believe it's mostly anchored around the high school and a little biased about that, but we don't care, and we've, I pushed this out. We don't care if they attend any program in Coffey County. That's what we're really focused on. If any veterans want to participate in, in any of their programs, you know, I'll explain the Interactive Veteran Museum, and then I'd love to see that go to all the schools. CCA did it last year. She spoke to me and I explained it to her, and she recruited a veteran to do it there. Very successful, unfortunately, he passed away. So we do lose our veterans. So if they want to participate in any of the schools, hop in, and I got with Ms. Lotte and we, you know, so that I can get coordinated with these schools and find a point of contact for each one if they contact me. So we're really pushing that. So, and I do have a list, and I'm going to send that to you. I just finished it up. We compiled a list, Ms. Lotte did the schools, the Coffey County schools that contacted her, and then we went and checked the other private schools. And we're still going to add on to this if more do participate. Now, now I'll go into our baby at the high school. We do a morning program where we have a little social hour with the veterans, and then we go to the, this year, we're going to have it in the Performing Arts Center instead of the gym. We have a little ceremony there. We're still working on speaker, hopefully from Moon, but I've got some backups. After the ceremony, we have a parade, and this is really cool. We have a little parade from the gym or from the Performing Arts Center now to the Media Center, and we feed the veterans lunch. So they all appreciate that. It's, it's really nice. We might have some visitors this year. We're working on that, too. That's traditional, that's going from 9:30 until 11:30, 12-ish. At 12 o'clock, we do the Interactive Veterans Museum. This is my baby. When I was at the freshman campus, Abe wanted me to, you know, do a program. And I'm like, well, we can't, he's at the high school. Everybody goes there. That's, that's the big thing. So what are we going to do? And, and I remembered something. One of the veterans that is, participates every year, he had done a little thing at the high school and, or at the middle school. When we were at the Veterans Day program one day at high school, we were talking about it, and I remember that. And I said, he had pictures that he was showing to the middle school students, and then they were asking questions. And I said, well, what if we did that? So the Veterans Interactive Veteran Museum and is, every veteran that participates, they get a table, six-foot table. They put their memorabilia out, and we all have memorabilia of some type, whether it's photographs, whatever. And we bring the kids in. And it was unbelievable. It was such a, James Dennis, myself and Leon Brown were the first three at the freshman campus, and the kids were just like totally engrossed in what was going on. Questions, you know, interested. So we did it at the freshman campus. I tried to get more and more veterans. We had Mr. Rudy one year, he was a hit. No, Mr. Rudy wasn't a hit. He's not, he's doing very well, but anyway, so he couldn't participate after that. When I moved to the high school, that was one of my, one of my things I told Ben, I said, what about my Veterans Day program? He said, you can bring it. I said, okay. So again, we're making it more excellent, so we're trying to improve it. And they, they came up with a great idea because of the initiatives of patriotism and civics. So instead of just high school students coming to this for three hours from 12 to 3:00, and this is veterans, and we get recruiters to come. And last year, we had a military dog handler table, because the handler's actually was deployed, but his wife, you know, put, set the table up. So this year, what we're going to do is, the first half, we're bringing in fifth graders from all around the county. So it gives them an opportunity to, and the veterans love it. They love the kids. So we're going to have fifth graders from all over the county come for first, hour, hour and a half. And then the second hour and a half, we're going to do, we're going to have the sophomores from the high school come through, because they have not seen it. So we're hoping to perpetuate that, and so that every year, we can just keep going with fifth graders and sophomores to keep that going and keep it fresh and just continue this. And I'm going to say on a personal note, I've been trying, I'm going to keep trying, do everything I possibly can to turn this idea into a national initiative, because it's, number one, it's so easy, and it's very inexpensive. It really doesn't cost much money at all, if any. It can be as simple as one table and one veteran to how we do it at the high school. We get 20-some veterans and, you know, we have pretty tablecloths and, you know, it's that easy. But it does several things. If you, I'll tell you this, too. I get jealous, because I see some of my students that are more engaged with veterans than they are in my classroom. So I know it works, okay? So the kids, it's been obvious over the years that, that our students really don't know what veterans are, what the military is. They don't realize that there's jobs, that there's possible careers. So this opens up their minds about it, gives them options for, you know, career choices after school, because, you know, a lot of them don't know what they're going to do. And, and I'm going to tell you, the veterans love it. They, I've got some that have been doing it for several years. James Dennis and Leon Brown, Leon missed it last year because he had a flat tire. He's done it every year he's involved. And, and we're just, I'm getting more and more veterans that are interested in it. And we, you know, we lose some, some can't make it because of age, you know? But it's, they just love doing this and they just can't wait to come back. So I just wanted to let you know that this is what we're doing. This is what's going on in our schools, and we need to really push this out there and promote it and get as many people as we can to come out to these programs. Again, yeah, I'd like them to come see the, you know, one thing I do, I wish the public would come to the Interactive Museum. They come to the programs, because that's what they, they remember, they know, but they don't realize what the Interactive Museum is. And I mean, that really shows something different. And if they can see these, these students engaged, and I think that's why it's hard for me to try and push this. I want to find a national organization that could do that, but I think they just think, oh, there's just another Veterans Day program. So I think we're going to probably have to try and get somebody to do a professional presentation that I can send out. Maybe then they can see it's different. But please, pass this around, tell everybody, and you're all personally invited to both programs at the high school if you're not there. And I will make sure that Ms. Lotte has that community invite, so you can see what times ours are available. And she will also be posting and it'll be around, hopefully, all the other schools that have programs. So if you've got children and grandchildren, any of the other schools, feel, you know, feel free. If you know any veterans, please get them out. If they're interested and they want to participate in the Interactive Museum, they can get ahold of me, contact me, contact anybody to get my contact info, and I'll, I'll set them up. I don't care if I have 30 tables in the high block, 40 tables, you know, we'll fit them in. Thank you.
Appreciate their progress.
Thank you, Ms. Pachac.
Thank you.
All right. So the Veterans Day program at the high school will be November 11th. Is that correct? Correct. At this time, we have on the agenda our organizational and operational effectiveness. We have the East Bloss presentation. With the East Bloss being on the ballot, we did want to bring that up tonight at the board meeting and just share with the board and with everybody who will be viewing the video, who's not here, a video that was made concerning the East Bloss and just an informational video about East Bloss. All right.
Let's talk about East Bloss and the power of a penny. East Bloss is an educational sales tax that provides modern, safe, and secure facilities for all Coffey County children. This is not a new tax. This is just the renewal of the educational sales tax that is already benefiting the students of our Coffey County schools. One cent, that is all it costs. That penny is used by Coffey County schools to promote a better future for our students and economic growth for our community. Your penny can change lives. This is what your penny does.
Your penny counts on sale.
So early voting is going on currently at the Central Square Complex, and then, of course, November 7th, election day will be on the ballot. So just a reminder. All right. At this time, we have our consent agenda. We have the minutes from the September meeting. They were reviewed at the work session. And next, we have our monthly financial reports, and they were reviewed at the work session also. We've got the school nutrition equipment purchase, the purchase of an oven for one of the schools through the nutrition department. We have the furniture purchase for Westside in the library at Westside, and that was discussed at the work session. And then the Coffey High School repair of the entrance there at Coffey High School. And that was also discussed at the work session.
All right. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make motion.
Wait a second.
Second.
Preston? All in favor?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman for tonight. All right. Vice Chair. All right. We have, next on the agenda, executive session. I don't have a need for an executive session. And then we have our personnel recommendations.
We're putting those separate together.
You can vote them together. We'll be fine. The substitute list and the regular personnel list.
We have a motion to approve-
We have a motion to approve the personnel recommendations, including the substitute list.
Although we accept the recommendations.
Wade, all the flavor?
All right. At this time, we have public comments.
Got one, Mr. Michael Newton.
I have a quick question before I start my time. I thought that I had to be here for Executive Session. That was what was told to me, because I signed in yesterday, and they said I would be on the five-thirty clock. So what changed?
State law.
Yeah, they changed that. We had to, we had to put it in the regular meeting.
We just need to know so.
Everybody didn't have executive, I mean, everybody didn't have participation like we did. Some did, some didn't. Like moved a rule that you had to have, had to be in the actual meeting, so it's been moved at that meeting.
So it's still coming at five-thirty and coming at seven. Okay, that was a total and shared for me, so that's why I asked, because I was still thought that it would come at five-thirty. But I'm here talking about autism. On the last meeting, you all had, the young lady came and shared about dyslexia. I think it was glad you told her that you would do everything you could to make sure that you help, because she stated that the earlier they can find it, it was shown it can be helped at early ages. And so a lot of issues we have here, I love the word that you all use, empathy. Empathy is something that says is understanding, awareness of sensitive, vicariously experiencing the feelings and thoughts of another. A lot of kids here in Coffey County have IEPs and 504 plans. But a lot of these kids are ending up in situations where they're going to alternative school. We know that the LTE count is off, that the person that does the IEPs for the county is a part-time person, when it should be full-time. We understand also that over fifty percent of the kids in alternative have an IEP or medicated, or also on psychotherapy meds or drugs. And so these kids are also kids that are understood that the school system in which the extra funding, but is not allocated towards these kids. Now, your own professional, Baker Wright, that comes in, and y'all have him in sometimes three to four times a year, but he does a clinic over at First Baptist Church, First Academy. He stated also that there's some things that need to be cleared and done inside the school system with kids with IEPs. We also understand that IEPs are not completed. When they're passed down, when kids go, when parents go to the school and try to get an IEP set up, that once this kid get in trouble, their IEPs are not met fully. And what I mean by that, that it should be a step down. If this kid gets in trouble, this IEP manifestation shows the way it should manifest, the how it should go for this kid to get in trouble. Now, most of these kids are getting sent to the alternative school. And I want you all to go look at the board and look at the number of kids that you got at alternative school. It's overflowing now. You got a waiting list. Half of those kids have IEPs, but you don't have the right people, the BCBA's, or you don't have the ABA therapists. So I'm saying, what are ABA therapists? There are, ABA therapists are therapists that assess the individual behavior and issues and behavior reconduction, reduction. And the will to acquisition, one way that this there's for approach to acquisition of how this child respond. The other one is a BCBA, Certified Board Behavioral Analyst. We almost have these people that are in the room when these parents go to these meetings to show that these different things that need to be done for the kids, how to do. I think you all just did the rooms on this past year, what they call, man, where they get in trouble. Pedonists.
Assessor.
Accessory rooms. Sensor rooms. Y'all just did the sensor room. Baker Wright stated that these sensor rooms were in effect over three to eight years ago when he was teaching here. But y'all just updated them because a lot of things, we had a lot of kids getting in trouble at a lot of elementary schools. We know at the middle school, we had some situations, kids being put out of school. We got kids that's been charged by your police officer. They don't have the right training on how to deal with these kids when they escalate. All the stuff that needs to be done, you're not doing. And so when the young lady was talking about the kids with dyslexia, these kids with autism, and you remember I asked the question? I said, is autism and dyslexia the same? She said, no, it isn't. Autism is worse than dyslexia. These kids have behavior issues that need to be caught at an early age, but if trained, these kids can be better kids. But what we're doing is punishing them, putting them in alternative schools, suspending them, kicking them out of school, making them go to school online school. But we talk about excellence. We talk about empathy. How can we talk about empathy and excellence if we're taking kids that are disabled kids, mentally disabled, going through therapy, and your principals and your teachers know that these kids have issues, but are yet suspending them? What are we going to do about that? What are we going to do to make the excellence come to that? Because we know we don't have special education or Special Olympics anymore. But what Coffey County did do, and I'm appreciative of that, they have Kayla Day, which is coming this Friday for kids with disability. Those are the least fortunate kids that we do less about, but y'all get more funding for those kids being in the system. And so I want you to look at the numbers. I'm not giving you any false numbers. I want you to look at the numbers, look at the kids. East Side had a problem. West Side is your particular better school with kids with disabilities and autism. Indian Creek was one of the better ones, but it shifted in this last year. The middle school has over three hundred kids with IEPs and 504. That's why y'all switched the principals around last year, because three or four of the principals had a lot of stuff going on with kids with IEPs, where there was misdiagnosis and not doing the right thing. And even your therapist, Ms. Lisa, stated the same thing, that y'all got to do some things better. So I think, does anybody got any questions on IEPs, on BCBA's, on every therapist? Because when the young lady came, y'all had questions. Y'all wanted to know what could y'all do, how could y'all help? And so I hope that y'all have some questions on kids with disabilities with autism, unless it's the wrong section, because again, when I came last time, it was on the five-thirty work session. And Mr. Lott, you had a whole lot of questions, and so I'm hoping that you have some questions for me this time.
She gave, came and gave us a presentation. That's different than this right here, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, we're going to keep this straight, but I will talk to you after the meeting, and I will ask you those questions.
Okay, that's fine. Anybody else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Newton.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right. At this time, we have adjournment of the meeting, and we want to go ahead and adjourn the meeting.
All right. Anything else?
I did want to announce as part of my comments at the end of the meeting is that tomorrow is National Civics Day. And we've asked everybody to wear red, white, and blue. Different campuses, some campuses have different things going on, but we thought it would be a good day to show patriotism and wear red, white, and blue tomorrow for Civics Day, so that's all I had.
And the Veterans Day celebrations are on Friday the tenth.
The tenth.
Saturday is the last. They're on Friday the tenth.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Newton.
Mr. Newton, I appreciate you coming and speaking.